This conference will now be recorded.
We have all of the members of the Board of Supervisors here with us online, as well as our Executive Director Sarah Moorhead, and Administrative Assistant Leah Kellogg, and our Attorney Ben Cushman from Deshute Law Group. First thing I want to do is the agenda review. Are there any changes to the agenda from Board members?
I was. It says Executive Session, and we've been calling it a Special Session. Which is it?
It's a Special Session because we're discussing qualifications for public office.
That's what I thought, so we need to change that.
Just to clarify, this is an Executive Session in a Special Meeting, because this is not our standard, regular Board meeting. It's an out-of-cycle meeting, but the Executive Session is still consistent with RCW.
Okay, great. Thank you.
This would be considered an Executive Session. We have had things similar to Executive Sessions for the consideration of the collective bargaining agreement, but that was different. That was under an exception.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
squarely an Executive Session.
So the one change I would propose to our agenda is let's take Item 5, the midterm elected seat appointment, off of our agenda since that's the topic of our Executive Session. Any objection to that? Okay. Then with that change.
I think you should, rather than taking it off, move it after the Executive Session, so you can still make an appointment decision in the public meeting if you so choose.
Okay, that sounds good.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Go ahead.
Item 11, well, it should be 12, after the Executive Session, is the Executive Session Report Out, which is already a potential action item to capture any actions that the Board of Supervisors may make as a result of the Executive Session about the midterm elected seat appointment. It's already phrased as an action item, and I think that there are some guidelines around special meetings and action items needing to be noted on the agenda prior. So I just, Ben, I want to clarify that with you. Would you recommend moving Item 5, midterm seat elected appointment, down here or capturing motion in this action item?
Why don't you just move the words midterm election seat appointment to 11? So it says Executive Session Report Out/Midterm Elected Seat Appointment, so that we have a clear record of what the Report Out action might be.
Great, thank you.
Okay, great. So with that change, is there a motion to approve our agenda?
We don't move on these, do we?
We do, because this is a Special Meeting.
Oh, okay. I saw Move.
Moved by Betsy. Is there a second?
All second.
Seconded by David. Okay, we'll do roll call vote here. Betsy, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
David?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. We have an agenda approved. There's no staff presentation, so that takes us to Item 3, the April 23, 2020 Minutes Review and Revision. Those up on the screen here.
Yep.
All right, we'll take this as we usually do, page by page. Are there any changes? I believe this is the second draft, so we've all seen this a couple times. Any changes to the first page? Okay, hearing none. Let's look at Page 2. Scroll down there, Sarah. Did we lose Sarah? We may have lost Sarah.
Sarah?
Are you back, Sarah? No. Okay. I will ask anyway, while we're waiting for Sarah, assuming we've all looked at these, is there any changes? Page 2. Sarah, are you back?
I am back. I'm not sure what happened there. Have you guys seen Page 2?
Yeah, we're on Page 2. Are there any changes to Page 2? Hearing none. Let's look at Page 3. Are there any changes to Page 3? Hearing none. Let's go to Page 4. Any changes to Page 4? Hearing none. Let's move to, I think Page 5 is the last page. Is that right?
I think there's 6.
6, okay. Any changes to Page 5? Hearing none. Any changes to Page 6? Okay, hearing none. Should we go ahead and put this on consent agenda for approval at our Board meeting later this month? Is there a motion to do that?
So moved.
Moved by Doug?
I seconded.
Seconded by Betsy to put the minutes on the consent agenda for our May Board meeting. Doug, how do you vote?
Aye.
Betsy?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That will be put on consent. Takes us to Item 4, COVID-19 Health Crisis Reassessment. Sarah?
All right, I'm going to share a couple of documents with you guys on the screen here. A lot has changed since we last had some conversation, but also means that some more guidance has come out for us to respond to. One of the items of guidance that I'm putting on the screen now is the Governor's phased approaches for reopening business and social distancing guidelines and group gathering guidelines for Washington State. I want to just share this really briefly, because one of the items that's on here, and I'm not sure if you guys can see my cursor or not on the screen, but it's under Phase 3, under Business Employers. Government, telework remains strongly encouraged. So I just wanted to point out that Phases 1, 2, and 3 are really strongly encouraging government employees to remain in a telework phase, which would mean that Phase 4 is starting to look at more a normal business-as-usual practices in terms of open offices. So I wanted to share that information first, and then I'm going to pull up one other document for you guys. The Conservation Commission came out with a return-to-work protocol for their staff. Here we go. Some of which is relevant to Thurston City and some of which is not, just because we're not housed within a major state agency building. But this is a three-page document that takes into consideration CDC guidelines, local health authority guidance, OSHA guidance for preparing to return to work, and really goes through how employees who are in remote settings will function, how employees that are in the office will function, sanitizing and disinfectant requirements and guidelines, meeting guidelines, fieldwork things, how to use shared equipment and shared vehicles. And so I've been reviewing this, and some of these items are applicable to things that we can glean for our district. Obviously, we're much smaller again and not in a state agency, so some of this is not relevant. But what I would like to have conversation with the Board about is I would recommend that our phased approach about returning to work in any sort of regular office, consistent time, happen once we reach that guidance from the Governor, that Phase 4 guidance. I've asked staff to prepare or extend their telework plans through the end of June at the time being. And obviously, we'll want to keep reassessing this situation as we receive new guidance or see how things are going and progress over the next couple of months. You know, our district can certainly choose to, you know, limit office interactions or interactions in closed spaces or events or, you know, et cetera, beyond what's recommended. But that's kind of the minimum right now that is recommended, that I wanted to present to the Board. And then I would love to, based on our conversation here today, really refine and develop this type of a protocol for just Thurston City specifically, so it'll incorporate our field guidance that we already have in place with our unaccompanied site visits, but could also include things like, as we open up a little bit more socially distant work parties. You know, what does outdoor education in small groups look like? Or, you know, kind of entertain some of these other pieces of business that the district does in a new way. So that's what I have to share, and I'd love to have discussion.
Hey, feedback or questions or comments for Sarah from Board members?
I guess just.
I like the approach. Go ahead, David.
I was just going to ask one question. We're still currently in Thurston County. We're still Phase 1, correct?
Yes.
And so we're just looking for, you're thinking Phase 3 is when we will start to open up, and we need to come up with some guidelines for the office?
I think the guidance, and I'll put that back on the screen, is really saying that government is strongly encouraged to stay in a telework capacity until Phase 4, which is the last phase of this. If you can see here, I'll kind of zoom in a little bit. Government under Phase 3 is still telework remains strongly encouraged. So it's not required, but it is strongly encouraged. And I think it would be possible for us to do a very staggered approach before then that ensures that there are just very minimal amounts of people in the office at the same time, and we alternate days and do a lot of sanitizer spaces and touchpoints in between. But I think Phase 4 is really looking like more of a normal work setting for the district.
Okay.
So Sarah, what you were talking about relative to the Conservation Commission's guidance would really be developing that in time for us to have it in place by Phase 4?
Correct.
Okay. Other comments, questions from Board members?
I like what you've outlined, Sarah. I think we should have something in there about how we deal with other entities that are on a different timeline, other entities including individuals. There's some people that think this is no big deal and aren't concerned about, for example, wearing masks. So I think our job is to protect staff and our clients, but have some mechanism to protect them from people that think we're in Phase 7.
Yeah, absolutely.
I've noticed a lot of your staff, they share work areas basically, but is there a way to make sure that those are spaced enough to give them the proper spacing?
Yeah, fortunately, a lot of our staff have individual offices with doors that close, so their workspace doesn't have anyone, for the most part. Workspaces are independent. It's common spaces and handrails. We have two offices that share staff. They are more than six feet apart, but there's, you know, entry points and materials and stuff are shared. And we could, I would probably recommend there's during days, some separation. But we probably that we could work from their location temporarily in the building. It would mean things like need to switch extension and stuff for contracting and that kind of a thing. Staff field phones, I think it makes it a lot easier. So we could set up with individual offices for separacity.
Okay. I have a question, sort of, I guess it's related. It's not specific to the approach and your suggestion, which I'm fine with, but you have, do you envision, are we running into any challenges with staff being able to do their work remotely and being able to stay fully occupied remotely?
Yeah, no, not at this time. We're in a really good season right now for the work that we have planned for this year, one of which is a lot of field work happening because it's spring. So this is a high time for one-on-one site visits and a lot of planning and technical assistance and soil test analysis. So that's the majority of our driving work right now. Our outreach team has transformed a lot of our educational opportunities into virtual educational opportunities and is continuing to do other things like creating our marketing materials and our outreach materials. We've got a variety of larger resources and booklets and things that we're supposed to publish this year. So we've just kind of transferred some of that workload that's applicable really during this telework phase right now. I think one of the things we'll want to keep in mind as we move forward is what's going to happen with our next school year, beginning in September, and what and how that might look for any of our programs that engage K-12 education. So right now, a lot of that has transitioned into these other types of lessons and teacher professional development training opportunities and other types of technical assistance outside of that where we could use more capacity. But that's one of the things that we're kind of waiting to hear from the school district, what the next school year is going to look like, and that may be one that we want to have some conversation about our approach. At this point, though, folks are definitely fully engaged and have more than a full workload, I think, through the end of summer if we stay in a telework phase.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question.
And Sarah, with those people going out in the field and working with individuals in the public, are there protocols already in place for them to be wearing masks? Things like that?
Yeah. Yeah, we've taken a very conservative approach with our field site visits right now, and this was guidance developed while the stay-home, stay-healthy order was in full effect. And that's unaccompanied site visits. So we're doing a pre-and post-phone consultation with landowners, and then those landowners that are interested in these types of site visits, our staff is walking and doing their resource inventories and stuff unaccompanied. So landowners are staying inside. Our staff are walking outside, and there's never any person-to-person interaction. That's one of the things as we move through these phases, you know, that we can consider having socially distant protocol in place for folks to talk outside, masks, that kind of a thing. But right now, it's even more conservative than that, that they're not seeing other people in person.
Okay.
As someone who's slightly hearing impaired, I would like, I was really excited to hear you talking about perhaps doing some work parties and practicing social distancing, and it sounds great. I'm guessing that down the road, it might become more common to have some sort of microphone where you normally wouldn't need one, but you might have the wind, you might have other background noises. Everyone's so far spread apart. It might be something to look into at some point. Some sort of, you know, either a microphone or not a bullhorn, but you know.
Absolutely. We have a field amp and mic that we invested in a year or two ago for that purpose, Betsy, because you're right, it is hard when we're outside doing this type of stuff anyway to make sure that people in the back of groups can hear us. And now if we're going to be spread out even further, if we're not going to do one-on-one instruction with family groups, definitely we'll need that. I hear you. I think that's a great idea.
Great. Well, that's exciting to, I can see us as kind of role models of things we can do outside that are productive.
Absolutely, and keeping people engaged and helping our community connect with the outdoors during this time. I think it's really healthy for our community in general.
Yes, me too.
Okay, so it sounds like generally the Board is supportive of Sarah, you going forward with some guidance that would be ready to go by the time we get to Phase 4, knowing that Phase 4 is a ways out yet, and there'll be opportunities for you to check in with the Board along the way to kind of reality check and vet what you're coming up with. So I think you've got a green light to start to work in that direction, is what I'm hearing from the Board?
Sounds good.
Are there other issues we need to discuss in terms of COVID response, Sarah?
This is everything that I have at this time, but I'm more than happy to have any other conversation or answer any questions that folks have.
Any further questions or comments from Board members?
No.
I'm not hearing any, so it sounds like we may be ready to move on to our next agenda item here. And I'm pushing this along a little bit just to catch everybody up here, because David does need to leave at 4:30, and I'm really hoping we can get to our Executive Session so that we have the benefit of David's participation as we discuss that item in Executive Session. So if I'm moving too fast, tell me to slow down, but I'm going to try to push this in that direction.
Thank you.
So let's see. Next item on our agenda, if you can scroll up there. Sarah?
I'm trying to scroll.
Thank you. So, okay, so we moved Item 5, so the next item is the Strategic Plan Community Feedback. I believe that was sent out to us earlier, maybe it was last week, and it seemed like a grand total of one person weighed in on our plan, if I'm not mistaken there. Is that sort of where we stand with that, Sarah?
Yeah, that's correct. I'll pull that up on the screen as well. We did have one individual that participated in providing that feedback, which was, you know, less than what was desired. And I'm pulling that right there. Other than that, the plan has not changed. Stuff has been going through with more of an editor's eye, making sure that punctuation is in the right place, that grammar is correct, that sentence structure is consistent, and things like that. But yeah, the plan is the same as when you saw it for the public comment period, and this is the public comment that was received.
Could you scroll down further on that, please? So, exactly. So I don't see, I don't understand how this is, give them an opportunity to comment on the draft strategic plan. It asks them what they want, but it doesn't imply that they've looked at the plan and have feedback. What am I missing?
Yeah, the instructions for providing comments, add the plan link first for folks to review that, and then this was a guided way that we could aggregate that feedback with these questions. So if we were to get, you know, 50 responses, we would be able to organize what is the gaps are playing, and where, what is the most information their address provides as well. So it might email other types of, that didn't fall in this, they could email directly.
I'm not sure exactly what's going on, but Sarah, half the time you're cutting out, and I don't think it's my phone, maybe.
No, I'm hearing that too. I'm hearing that as well, Doug, that Sarah is cutting out pretty frequently.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if it's, you know, closer to the microphone or tilted your head or what. I'm sure you could figure it out.
Well, Betsy, I think your comment was good. What I see here in this one public comment, though, to me, doesn't, sort of what they're saying is already stuff that we put in the plan as areas of emphasis. I'm not seeing anything new there unless somebody else does. So from my perspective, I don't see anything here in terms of the public comment that would alter our draft at this point. See David shaking his head. I think that means he agrees.
This is Doug. I agree as well. I read this before, and I don't think it changes anything.
Yeah. So at this point, it seems like with the final editing underway for grammar and stuff like that, we would be ready to put our strategic plan on our March Board Meeting agenda for an action item, unless anyone sees other direction. I think we're ready to make a decision on this at the end of the month.
Concur.
All right, David shaking his head. Doug concurs. Betsy? Betsy, you're muted.
Yes, that sounds fine. Sorry.
Okay. All right, so we won't put it under consent. We'll do it as a separate action item, but let's put our strategic plan on the March Board Meeting for action and approval.
That sounds great. I hope you all can hear me better. I called in on my phone this time.
That's better.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Okay, let's move on then to Item 7, update on equipment rental and soil testing.
Yeah, we have been trialing our alternative equipment rental and soil testing approach now for a couple of weeks on the equipment and about a month on the soil testing. Things are moving really smoothly. I think that folks are really excited that our equipment is available. So we've been able to get various pieces of equipment out into the communities. Our soil testing program is continuing. We're able to offer those recommendations. And so so far, everything is moving along great. I don't have a ton of an update. I know this is a standing item for our work session discussions, but we haven't run into any major challenges. And in fact, we have been able to share our protocols with Pierce and King and a couple of other districts that have adapted them and utilized them to get their equipment rental programs up and running during this time. So it's been really helpful that we worked really hard to get that underway, because now it's having an effect throughout our area.
I had almost a dream last night about it. I thought, wow, we're going to meet other farmers too, you know? I think it's a great thing, but at least with the poultry equipment, going from farmer to farmer. I mean, I'm picking it up from Faith and Offs, who I already know, but you know, I don't know who's picking it up from me, and I'll get to meet them.
Absolutely. There's a huge piece of community connectedness that's happening because of this.
Great. Well, no news is good news then, or so I guess we just continue on and move forward with that.
Yeah, I'd like to ask you guys if you want this to continue to be a standing update on work sessions or special meetings, or if you would like me to just bring something to you if there's a challenge.
I would suggest that if there's an issue that comes up either with the equipment rental or the soil testing service, that you just incorporate that into your Executive Director report, and we drop this as a standing agenda item.
I agree.
Concur.
I agree.
Okay, we're on board with that. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right, let's then move to Item 9, the policy development for our bid policy.
Yeah, so this has a little bit of context, and Ben may want to jump in at the end here. In doing a lot of research with MRSB and their guidance for bidding, we really had a lot of conversation about the different ways that the district essentially procures things, services, goods, you know, large construction projects. services, goods, you know, large construction projects that we need bids for. And so there seem to be really three different veins that we interact with this type of procurement. And so what we've done, and Karen Stralioff has done the legwork on this and is just amazing, and her mind is fantastic. She's really scoured the MRSC guidance and separated the bid policy into these three sections that really deal with larger, like public work style, construction projects, contracting for professional services, you know, like an engineer for design, and then pursuing other types of goods, like a prefabricated bridge, for example. And broken the policy out in a way that has a very clear process utilizing this guidance from MRSC to go about each of those processes that once that policy has been reviewed and approved by the board, we would, our staff would then generate a checklist based on that so that we make sure we're moving through a systematic process and obtaining and retaining all of the documentation that we need. This draft made it over to Ben this week for review. It's a very lengthy policy. This one's about 11 pages right now as it stands as a draft. But this is one of the most important legal areas that that I think we need to spend a lot of time and attention on. So my hope was that we would get a draft out of review from Ben and staff to the board for this special meeting. But we definitely need to have more conversation with Ben after he's finished his review of this policy to make sure that all our eyes are dotted and Ps are crossed in the legal sense, I think, before it's ready for for board review. Ben, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, I just got it. I started my review. My review, though, is not yet done. This is a heavily regulated area of law, although there's also increasing discretion given to agencies about how bids are handled. But the discretion is against the backdrop of a lot of litigation, court rulings, and a lot of statutory regulation. So I'm still working through it. It's kind of a long slog. It was not done in time for this meeting. I expect it will be done in the near-ish future, certainly in time that it can be taken up at the next work session or meeting.
Okay, so the next board meeting is two weeks from today, and then the work session would be a couple of weeks after that. Ben, do you think we can have it ready for the agenda in two weeks, or do you need more time? I guess Sarah, too. Do we need more time? And do we need to put it on the June work session, or can we handle it in the May board meeting?
I think that I should be able to complete my review over the weekend and get it back to Sarah next week. I am not entirely sure what the outcome of my review is or whether that will trigger iterative work from Sarah's team. But it looks good to me so far, so I don't anticipate that. So I think we are looking good for it to be able for your review by the end of next week, which should give us time to put it on the agenda in two weeks. But that might change.
Is that your perspective too, Sarah?
Yeah, I think we would really need to see what Ben comes back with, and if that creates any additional review or discussion amongst staff before that final is ready. Just as a note, we send out board packet materials the Friday before each meeting so that supervisors have the weekend to review, and essentially a week's time to review those materials. So I think I can definitely be in communication with the board about when we receive that, if it looks like we're going to need to do some more work to the policy before the board packets go out so that you're aware of whether or not that's something that, or before we finalize the agenda, so that you're aware of whether or not that needs to be bumped to the next work session.
Okay, well, that seems like a reasonable, reasonable discussion. So we'll try to put it on the agenda for the May board meeting, and if not, it'll get bumped to our June work session, which will be on the second Tuesday of the month, which is a decision we made at our last work session, or our last board meeting, I guess. So we'll see it as soon as it's ready to be seen, I guess. Anything further on that, Sarah or Ben?
I don't have anything on that.
Me neither.
Okay. All right, then let's move on to item 10, ED and Board Report. And I'll just start on my screen here. Betsy, do you have anything?
No.
Doug?
Yes, I do have one thing. The WACD is looking for people to help with the conference planning team, and that involves whether to have a hybrid conference of some face-to-face with virtual or just virtual or what. That would be the week after Thanksgiving, so it's a ways off. And I'm thinking, Sarah, with your planning background, I'd like to get your okay to put your name forward. And if any of the supervisors are interested too, let me know.
I would be happy to help with our agenda.
Okay, thank you, Doug. David? Anything?
Nothing today. Thank you.
All right. The one thing I would report on is a continuing update on our discussions with the City of Olympia about the Zahn parcel and farmland loss. I've continued to have discussions with Councilmember Madrone, and the next step there is we've been doing some research on farmland mitigation policies that exist in other communities. And she and the members of the city's Land Use Committee are interested in developing a mitigation policy that would guide how, if the city was going to develop farmland, how that would be mitigated. So the next step there is we're trying to schedule a virtual meeting with some folks in the city, myself, I've suggested that we bring Sarah into the conversation, and then also the Executive Director and Chair of Community Farmland Trust as well. And we'll have an initial brainstorm meeting, talking about, looking at some of these other examples that we've seen, mostly from California, actually, and then trying to figure out a path forward for an official mitigation policy with the City of Olympia that would be able to be in place before we have any loss of farmland at the, at the Zahn parcel for this new park. So I'm pretty optimistic about the way things are moving, and finally feel like I have some receptive partners at the city that want to take this seriously.
If I'm Mr. Chair, may I make a comment on that? I'd be willing to bring this to WACD at our conference call in the morning, and also with the NACD Pacific Region Representative who is down in California.
That would be great, and if they have any information or know communities that have put mitigation ordinances in place, we'd really like to know that.
That's what I'm assuming, yes.
Thanks, Doug. That'd be great. Okay, that's it for me. Anything from our Executive Director?
I've got a couple of quick items. One of which is that we have officially submitted our Schedule 22 Financial, Annual Financial Report to the State Auditor's Office as of today. So we will share that confirmation with that information out to supervisors for you to see. So that's really exciting. That's a very large report that we do annually. In terms of annual reports as well, the 2019 Annual Report of Accomplishments, final, kind of first final draft is complete, and I'd like to send that out to the board to take a look at this evening. A draft of that is due to the county as part of our interlocal agreement for recent charges tomorrow. And I apologize for that tight review timeline. We did not get a jump on this as soon as we had hoped in light of our transition to COVID world. But it's complete and ready to move. PJ had asked if folks would particularly take a look at the chair's message included in there. But feel free to offer any feedback that you have. I need to update that by close of business tomorrow, so if you have any thoughts, send them my way before noon. That would be fantastic. This is a marketing piece, so it looks very much like a magazine with lots of photos and accomplishments and numbers and stats to show the work that we did as well. Now that we have our strategic plan, some consensus around putting that on for approval at the May meeting, just a reminder that now in the next week, I will take that strategic plan and adapt it into a 2020 Annual Plan of Work. And so that will be another item, another plan item that the board will want to review and consider approval of at this May meeting. That is due to the Conservation Commission at the end of this month. So we had talked about kind of this tandem schedule, and so we're getting right down to the last leg of that. And if folks have questions about that, let me know. The format will be the same as previous year's annual plan, but include this strategic plan's metrics and this year's approved budget. So there's not a lot of wiggle room for things to change, but it'll be nearing these priorities with this approved budget. Finally, I sent out a survey link for our local Puget Sound Working Group. That survey is due on the 16th. It's a very short and simple survey that NRCS facilitates via districts, through districts in our local areas to identify resource concerns and priorities for conservation. And this feedback directly directs USDA funding and programming in our community. So please continue to share that information widely and fill out the survey so that that feedback can go back to NRCS. They'll be between myself, Amy Hendershaw at NRCS, and folks at the Conservation Commission will host a informational webinar meeting on the 27th of May. So that's Wednesday in the evening at 6:30 to go over those survey results and continue to have discussion with anyone who chooses to participate in that. That's what I got.
Thank you, Sarah. That's it for your report?
That's it for my report.
Okay, great. With that, we are going to move into executive session. Our executive session will be to evaluate the qualifications of a candidate for appointment to elected office. And in this case, we are talking about the vacancy on the board created by the resignation of Paul Pickett. Members, people that'll be in that executive session will be the board members, our Executive Director, and our legal counsel, Mr. Cushman. We will not take any action in the executive session. We will move to a separate meeting room for the executive session. And at the end of that executive session, we'll come back into this meeting room and have a report out and any potential actions resulting from discussion in the executive session. So with that, Sarah, have you sent us the link for the other meeting room?
Yep, I sent the link to the other meeting room. It should be at the top of your inbox. Leah, please say this meeting room. I think I can hold it open.
That's great. How long will this executive session last?
My guess and assumption is it will be no more than 30 minutes and probably likely less than that.
Great. That's what I will add to our minutes.
Okay, so with that, we will close this meeting here and move to our executive session meeting link, and we'll see you all on the other side in just a minute.
I have a question.
Yep.
Should I leave this meeting? Should I click leave on this one? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. See you all on the other side.
This conference will now be recorded.
I will get that up on the screen. Sorry, folks. That's the one.
Okay, great. There we are. Okay, we are now back in public session of the special meeting, the Thurston Conservation District of Supervisors for May 14. We just had an executive session to do, evaluate the qualifications of a candidate for appointment to elective office. And in this course, we're talking about the board vacancy created by Paul Pickett's resignation. Based on that discussion, we would like to direct our staff to reopen or extend the application period through the end of May. And we would like staff to specifically target outreach in ways that would increase the diversity and the strength of our existing board, targeting in particular agricultural producers, rural people, young farmers, and gender, and other types of diversity. We will hold the applications received to date as part of the pool of applicants that we will consider at the end of the, the end of the extended application period. Anything further that board members or ED would like to add to that report out?
That's great. That has direction.
All right. Great. Thank you. That then moves us to the last item on our agenda here, which is the May Board Meeting Development. I think, just to start that, we heard that we're going to try to put our bid policy on that agenda. We have the April 23 minutes, which will be on consent. We also have the 2020 Annual Plan Approval. That will be an action item, and we'll be seeing that next week after Sarah finishes it. Of course, we always have financial reports on our agenda, so that'll be there. Likely update to COVID response, they're taking later where we are two weeks from now. What else am I missing there for our next board agenda?
The strategic plan. You might have said that as well.
Oh, I did not say that. Thank you. Yes, approval of our strategic plan.
I will have a WACD and NACD update. It'll likely be, all meetings have been postponed.
Okay. That looks like a good starting point. We'll see a draft agenda next week. Staff may put some other things on there as they think about this. And then we'll see a draft agenda that we'll be able to comment on before our packet goes out at the end of next week in advance of the meeting.
Mr. Chair, when we do our updates from the Executive Director and/or board members, I think an update on where we're at with appointed position filling would be good, too. I don't know that we need to have that as a full agenda item, but I'd like to know where we're at there.
At least we'll know how many applicants we have at that point.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. All right. If there's nothing further to add to our draft agenda, that concludes today's agenda, and that would mean we could entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll motion to adjourn.
I second it.
Moved by David, seconded by Betsy. Roll call vote. David, how do you vote?
Aye.
Betsy?
Aye.
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. We have unanimous decision to adjourn our meeting at 4:13 PM. Thank you, everybody, for another efficient meeting here.
Yeah, good job all.
Yeah, thank you all.
Thank you, TJ.
Okay, everybody, stay safe and stay sane out there.
Thank you.